And then we'll come for such time as this board acts mechanics, is that correct?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. And based on your review of the E R C C report, the applicant will comply with all of the comments and questions raised by the E R C C.
As far as I saw in this type of reports, yes.
Did you issue any reports to the E R C C?
I did not.
Thank you. May I have a question? Thank you. Mr. Lieberman, you read your record and then you deal with this? Who do you want to, who do you want to have call? Have Paul Gray here, please.
Here.
Well, you know, this is what I've always, I don't think all party on this question. Uh, everybody.
You're gonna do one at a time, Stuart.
Yeah, if you don't just do, um, just see.
Okay. Good afternoon, uh, good evening, uh, good evening, Mr. Reddick, he's still in the row and numbering correctly right now. Um, in your report, do you report records to, uh, section one twelve, page forty three?
My son.
Great.
Yes, that section is discussed. On page twenty, twenty-one. Twenty-two, start at the very end of the report.
And just for the record again, repeat also, it's one twelve, this one eighty-eight. Briefly, would you describe before the board, why did you include that in your report and why do you think it's important to factor into? Make sure what section provides the question you be sorry.
Well, the title of this section is Principles and Standards for Site Plan and Subdivision Review. So these are the instructions that the town code is giving to the planning board and the zoning board for how to evaluate site plans and subdivision applications.
And did you think it was important, you included in your report and you think why?
Because I believe that if you read that section and you read those principles and then apply them to the, to the proposed site plan, you will find that the application simply does not meet those standards.
And in particular, what's included records in your report that you don't believe is natural?
Well, so some of the criteria for reviewing site plan and subdivision um, is compliance with all applicable ordinances and the master plan for harmony with surrounding uses, harmony with surrounding uses.
Let's stop with that. Did you have an opinion that you offered in the report as to whether or not this application was harmonious with surrounding uses?
I do.
This was in his report?
Well, not only was this in my report, but I also included this in my testimony before the board.
Move on. Yeah? Move on. Are you telling me to address it, but who do so good? Is that what that means? I wanted to see what you got.
Tell me you have one more question then move on.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. So, did you have an opinion as to whether this harmonious requirement is sound?
I do. I, I think they're, they're clearly reconcilable.
And is it your understanding that chapter one twelve, this one being fourth part, which is exactly what you're commenting?
Absolutely.
Um, you were asked whether or not you had been driven by the project, remember that? That testimony from Mr. Thomas, those questions by Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, and did you, did you drive by sufficiently in order to make the uniform opinions that informed and worked?
Well, so, the, the, the drive-by is simply to, um, to have witnesses visually. Um, I don't have photographic memory and typically when I'm writing a report, I refer to documents that are more precise than what I tend to recollect from in a twenty-five mile an hour, thirty mile an hour drive-by. So, the dimensions in, that are presented in my report are all taken from maps and surveys. They're not taken from some drive-by evaluation that I would have done from the seat of my car.
Thank you very much. And three way more questions, thank you. Can you please return to your seat?
So, so I have a medical question that is germane to something Mr. Reddick just said, which is, if you're doing them from maps and from reports rather than in the memory of, of your brief, um, the Sunday drive, which is completely understandable. I would think you would be able to answer those questions just in more precise way. I mean, perhaps Mr. Thomas was harsh, but I have a hard time disagreeing with his basic premise. Was that your testimony doesn't give us a warm fuzzy feeling that, um, you know, you're, you're facile with this particular, um, area. Because the questions Peter asked, I guarantee almost any more member of, um, could answer off the top of their head, um, because they live in the township. And he said that would revoke that if you do reference maps, that you have those areas you can answer what may use as well as go outside. So.
For, for his sake. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions? Please, Mr. Sam, can you sit down if there's any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Ball, can you come up, please? Mr. Ball, on, please, still on the phone, okay? And talk right with you.
Right, but, no, sorry, let me start.
When you, when you were asked questions by Mr. Landry, you were asked about how close your instructions were, uh, to other structures in section.
You have those questions that you raise.
Uh, it is, the essence of your report, though, wasn't site-specific, but rather a determination about whether certain criteria, isn't that the essence of your report?
Correct.
And, and in particular, what was that essence of your report? I want you to summarize it in two sentences.
The essence of my report was to say that in order to determine if there is a noise impact based on the E I S, uh, ordinance and the noise code, you need to look at, um, or do some map or a model.
Yes, and in, in the E I S report, hold on a second, sorry, I forgot. In the E I S report, isn't it true that what the applicant said was, it is not anticipated that the facility will receive daytime or nighttime usage allowance?
That is word for word out of the report.
And that was page ten of the E I S, isn't that correct?
I didn't write the page number, but it's from the February twenty twenty-three E I S, like that happened.
Did you find, thank you very much, did you find any evidence that there was any scientific background or support for that statement?
No, the claim is completely unsupported.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions for this with Mr. Chia. Does anybody else have a question? Yes, let me get out of the way, because I'm not gonna have any other questions. Very, very briefly, it is, the applicant's obligation to comply with the state standards, is it not?
It is.
And the applicant in their report made an analysis and came to their conclusion that we will be complying with the state standards, correct?
There is not an analysis here, there's a claim that's not supported.
Okay, and, and if the building was built and we don't need the state standards, if there are noise issues, it's on the applicant to address those issues, correct?
That is correct, but then people are going to be exposed to high noise levels for, you know, how long?
And that's not, that's not necessarily the case. If there's a violation, they could be cited and they could be stopped or they have to alter their operation, they may not.
That's correct.
And, and noise can be evaded in numerous ways, sound walls, uh, conditional screening, conditional buffering. So there are things that could be done if in fact there is an issue.
Yes, but this was an environmental impact statement determining impacts on the apartment before the development is developed. You need to do a model or map to find out a meaningful mitigation before having a negative impact on citizens for an unknown amount of time once the building is built.
So, the conclusion of the professional was that, in his opinion, and was also testified by the architect, that based on the way the buildings were built, the, the walls, the California walls, the corners, that there would be no noise impact.
There is no way to know that without doing the proper map. And also the architects claimed that they were going to be using air conditioners that, um, had certain noise levels but had no, that was also, also unsubstantiated, unsubstantiated claim because he had no big proof of what air conditioners it is called or AC units.
But, just like, let's get the record clear. The building itself, other than the offices, were not going to be air conditioned, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the only air conditioning would be the air conditioning for the office, which is about four thousand square feet.
That's correct.
Try the normal house.
The normal house, the basic systems with air conditioner, you have, you have to find. Sorry, um, you have to get the specifications from the manufacturer, put the decimal levels and put it into your model to determine if that, you know, have an impact in addition to the vehicles, the trucks.
So I'm not just, you brought up the air conditioning, I'm dealing with the air conditioning.
Yeah.
So you're saying a residential air conditioner or equivalent residential air conditioner located over a hundred and thirty feet from the property line has a potential to violate?
Well, I'm saying that an air conditioner itself has a potential to violate the ordinance, I'm not saying this.
No further questions?
I have a question. Is there any reasonable, is it reasonable to think that there might be a violation at the border in your expert opinion?
It's difficult to tell without doing the model.
Is it a possibility?
It's a, always a possibility. I gave this example in my last testimony, we did a very, very similar project in Robbinsville. They did the modeling, it turned out they had a small violation, they put up a twenty-foot-long berm with a wooden wall, no longer a violation, done.
So, one possibility is to build the building and then find out. And I'm hearing you saying that there's another possibility, which is to actually do a study, is that correct?
Correct, those are both options.
And, and in the, the study version, no building needs to be built, meaning with a relative accurate proximity to understand what that noise level would be at the border.
That is correct, I discussed that in my previous testimony.
Okay, and is this like a very lengthy study or is this just a study?
It's something that can be done in under a month, with somebody who knows what's what.
I agree, yes, thank you.
Anybody else on the board anything further? Thank you. Okay. All right, at this time, um, we'd allow the public the opportunity to cross-examine, um, the three witnesses that Mr. Lieberman has introduced. So I made a motion to open the public for that.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Well, here's what I want, um, we will, we will have a, depending on, on what we get, but we should, we should have a time limit, right? What I would like to do is not have, you know, something repetitive, um, you know, somebody comes up and says X, somebody else is gonna say X, and X person is gonna say X. We don't need that, like X person say Y, you know, and Z, et cetera, something, something, something different. So, yeah, that would be my general guide. Yeah. Exactly. Yeah, no, I think so. So before we get started, this is for the record, um, let the record reflect that Erica Innocentio, um, um, did arrive. Attended it in, um, Mr. Shabon asked to leave for five minutes, um, will it reflect what he's leaving?
For the purposes of the record, for the public who are going to ask questions, for the stenographer, the stenographer's request, please state your full name, please spell your last name, indicate your request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Dr. Stephen Brand, twenty-two Bryant Court. B as in boy, R A N T. So. No, I'm not. I haven't signed with the C Y.
The purposes of the record regarding examination of witnesses or even later on, or whenever we get the public portion open, and I would probably end up saying this again, anyone who is represented by the objector's counsel is not permitted to speak. That's why you went out to pay Mr. Lieberman firm, was to allow him to do the speaking. Only those individuals who are not members of the organization or qualified as an objector will be allowed to cross-examine witnesses and decide, and maybe public comment and have appropriate time for the public portion comes up whenever that's.
So my first question is for Mr. Ball, and then pronounce your name correctly.
Federico.
So I think most of the attention here has been on Canal Walk, but across from the planned warehouse is Summer Fields and there are homes that are within two hundred feet there. I noticed from the plan that the entrance to the warehouse is a large opening and it appears to me that sound tends, will tend to go through a corridor, funneling its sound towards that way. Do you see that as, am I correct of that assumption?
It, it's an assumption, but like I've been stating, the reason I'm here is I'm asking for a model to prove those things. So I'm not gonna speculate what is possible and that a model will account for everything in the property boundary.
But when there's no building to block the sound from, the main sound will be coming from the trucks, is that correct?
Most likely the trucks.
And if there's no building to block it, because where I live on Bryant Court, I actually hear the rumbling sound from the warehouses on Jensen. So, o- okay, uh, the other, will low-pitched sound tend to travel more than higher-pitched sounds? Because I can hear sounds from a thousand feet away from the warehouses on Jensen.
I mean, I don't, I don't have an exact answer for that, but like I said, if we, if we do a model, we can find out exactly what the noise impact's like for a property on the leave.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Pollard, B as in boy, U as in out, A as in D, I live in forty-nine Constitution in Canal Walk. I would please like some clarification about.
And all of them, oh, I'm just indicating not a member of Robbinsville and for Jensen. Why do members of the organization of the living represent them?
I'm a resident of Canal Walk, period. Is that good? I can speak now? Thank you. I would just like clarification about the noise. Um, I am sorry, I'm not an expert in noise, but it wasn't clear to me from the original testimony and the cross-examination about what residents in Canal Walk could expect the noise level from trucks to be. It's my understanding that the warehouses that E nine is proposing could be anywhere from forty to sixty truck bays and that they could be operational twenty-four seven. And if you look at what that means from the perspective of the number of trucks, you know, if there's one truck in each bay every four hours, it's two hundred and fifty-two trucks if there's forty-two bays. So what I'm trying to understand, and I'd like expert to explain, what does that mean from a noise level? Because I think what I heard was talking about the noise level of one truck. I'd like to know what the noise level would be twenty-four seven if there are trucks in and out of forty-two bays or sixty bays.
I would also like to know the answer to that question, which is why I'm testifying that I'm requesting the board request the applicant to complete a noise model to tell you that answer, because right now I do not know. And we'd like the applicant to tell us what we want.
Thank you very much.
My name is Dina Blanks, my last name is L U C H S. I live on Fifteen of Patriots Way in Canal Walk, Somerset, Somerset. And I have not a member of the group represented by the church. Okay, that's better. Thanks, Dina. Okay, um, I just wanna be clear about something when I speak. I'm not up here to ask questions, is that okay?
No, you are. You, you up here to cross-examine if you want to.
And that's all I'm up here to ask, so at this time, at this time, okay? And I will have a time later to not ask questions, so just.
Yes.
Okay, then I'm done for now.
I speak loud without it, but, okay, Karen Ingram, resident of Canal Walk, I am not a quagmire. Ingram is I N, Ingram is I N G R A M. Twenty Constitution Way. Okay. I have a question for Mary Pace Holmes. My question is, if soil management and water drainage is not handled correctly, in your professional opinion, would it contribute to additional flooding in the Canal Walk community?
Yes, if not managed properly, it will contribute to increased flooding in Canal Walk.
Is there anyone else who wishes to cross-examine any of the witnesses now?
Alex Strauss, S T R A U S, two eighty-five, Haslow Way. Um, I'd like to ask the, um, witnesses, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. One, um, you've been to the ocean on the shore, right? Okay, you've been to the ocean, been to the Atlantic Ocean, if you're, sir.
A few other oceans as well.
Right. You're driving north along the ocean, what side is the ocean, the Atlantic? What side is the ocean? You're driving north along the Atlantic Ocean.
Along the shore.
If you're driving along the shore.
Sir.
It's on the right, right? Okay. Okay, I understand. Okay, Mr. Escoboy. If you're driving north on Ventlers, the Sina Corridor, what side is, what side is this development, do you know? Okay, well, it's on, it's on the right side, right? It's only on one side, right? So we hear about the Sina Corridor, Sina Corridor has to be, you know, you know, Mr. Landry was maybe trying to set precedent here because he was attorney for Canal Walk, Summer Fields, everything. Saying, oh, well, okay, because it's been built on one side. What if it's been built along the ocean on the left side? Does that mean that maybe the ocean's not a Sina Corridor? It would be, wouldn't it, still? It's kind of like the Sina Corridor, it's Sina there, right? Same thing here, right? Okay, all right. Now, um, this Pace moment. You're aware there is a pond on the southwest portion of the property, or, okay?
Yes.
Just beyond the property, just beyond where they've been built. Notwithstanding the debate, is it possible that this pond could be affected by either construction and/or the presence, the actual presence of the development? Is that possible?
Depending on what you mean by affected, uh, there are potential impacts to water quality and hydrology, yes.
And you know also that I have one you've seen, it goes under the road, and there's actually a wooden area across, across the way south of Canal Walk, right? So it could affect that area too, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I wanna ask about, I can ask about the development specifically, um, the, I'm sorry. The, Mr. Rodriguez, um, Mr., there is of course a deal, Mr. Hiller and, um, and Link Logistics. Premier Development on their website at Canal Walk, on the second paragraph, they talk about the rural charm of Somerset provides the exquisite setting for this, provides the perfect setting for this exquisite neighborhood of luxury homes and amenities.
None of this was, is this in any of your testimonies, Mr. Reddick?
Not, not this particular.
All right, we gotta take the questions about the testimony that these witnesses have provided.
Now, for your general question or the reports?
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, you were saying that this, um, project would not, to your standards, uphold the Sina Corridor? Is that correct? You said that in the last session?
You did.
You did, okay. So, uh, does that mean that, for instance, you know, there's a charter school, you know, Ventlers, if they're supposed to be teachers, administrative staff, they drive up Ventlers, they decompress a little bit, um, you're saying that they won't get that same feeling as they drive, they're driving up Ventlers, they won't get that same feeling that they do now, you're saying? Okay.
Well, if they're competing with the council's stream, fracture trail, I would think that you're, you're compromised.
No?
And the constant stream of tractor trailers is going to undermine the whole point of the Sina Corridor. Because to my mind, a constant stream of tractor trailers is not an integral component or delicate component of the Sina Corridor. So there you have it, the wrong use, the wrong place.
I see. And you're aware there is a curb on Metlers and that contributes to, say, the Sina Corridor, sort of, in your mind, that kind of contributes to?
I can't speak to the details of infrastructure, you know, foot by foot. It's, it is what it is.
Right.
What's there is there. The point is, it's been, it's been defined as a Sina Corridor. With it come a certain number of rules and a certain number of assumptions.
I see. So it would not, it would not uphold the standards in your mind?
I'm not second guessing this planning board, which recommended the designation, and the township committee, which enacted the regulations.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Chairman Dr. Orsini, planning board staff, nice to see you. My name is Brian Levine, D R I A N, Levine, F E D, I N P, along Piscilla Lane, Somerset, New Jersey, 08873. I am not part of any group dealing with this issue. Okay, so, Dr. Orsini, can I ask clarification you asked me? Will you let me know if it's appropriate?
Well, I'll just, I'll just tell you right off. If it's a question for one of these three witnesses, it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Rodriguez, I, as I heard, I heard others before, as a planner, it's your opinion that the planning board is allowed to turn down the application, your expert opinion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And for Mr. Boe, the, I don't know, question about noise. And the question was asked, and the analogy made about air conditioning and at homes when it comes to the property line, is it the case that a 2,000 square foot home with a central air conditioner, that that noise produced by that would be similar to a warehouse with truck bays at the property line?
I was comparing a claim that it would be similar to a home air conditioner to an actual home air conditioner, saying that a home air conditioner could potentially have a noise impact. And if you believe your neighbor does, is succeeding, please follow your location and they'll count you longer.
No, this is, I'm sorry, Dr. Orsini.
No, just to leave, I think your testimony, you were specific to the portion of the building that was going to be air conditioned.
Yes.
Air conditioned, which is the 4,000 square foot office space. So what he was saying, Brian, was, he was just trying to make an analogy to the noise of, so the warehouse itself is not going to be air conditioned, just the office space, which is 4,000 square feet. That is close to the size of a fairly large residential home, and that was just sort of trying to make the analogy between what...
All right, thanks for your clarification. And I'm... It's, as I understand it, extremely slight, decimals are not additive, they're algorithmic, and you said that, okay, so many decimals, idling truck, if there are, and this wasn't part of your study, fine, it's part of your general knowledge, if there's an idling truck plus trucks coming down the street plus bays plus coming through, would that be above what an idling truck at the property line or in bay would be if there's multiple items like that, or is that one sound hits all?
No, generally when you have different sounds that are one louder than the next, it's going to add to a higher number.
Yes.
But in this specific case, you're not going to know exactly without doing the math or...
Okay. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Anybody else wish, if you would ask any questions of these witnesses, otherwise we close the public portion. Second, on David.
All right.
Thank you.
Chairman, before Mr. Landry calls his next witness, I think at this point may be appropriate for Mr. May to make some comments regarding representation he has to the board relative to his authority, he represents his property. I'm ready to begin.
Please proceed.
That's the only about give proof, full proof and nothing but proof that help we got?
It is.
State your full names by your last name and record by whom you're employed.
My name is Darren Mazzi, M A Z Z, I'm a senior assistant.
Communicate your qualifications for representation.
Sure, I've been a licensed engineer in the States since 2010, I graduated from the Rogers University in 2005. I've done reviews for the last five years, although I've been able to...
Any of the council or board have any objection to Mr. Landry's agreement that he's qualified?
I certainly do not, except that...
Okay, so in our original letter back in, on May 23rd, I recommended a third driveway and the board had requested that the issue of another amount of duty date on June 26th of this year. What my recommendation is, is to add a third driveway to the application for the two main reasons. One would be for site safety, because there's 60 active dock doors that are potential conflicts with the 32, I believe 32 parking spaces for the smaller warehouse, as well as, as everybody knows, there is a weight restriction on Schoolhouse Road. So if these driveways were separated, my next recommendation would be to put a raised concrete even in on the truck driveway to our truck, our truck, the other one. Right now the application called for a sign that says no left turns, but in my opinion that may become enforcement issue for police, which they may have a hard time unless they monitor any of the devices, so that would be two points of my recommendation.
Can you briefly describe what each of these three driveways, including the one now they'd be recommending, what function as, just to refresh the force memory?
Sure. So currently proposed, there's a western driveway that is 24 feet wide, that's going to service just parking on for regular vehicles. There would be larger warehouse. There would be a middle driveway, which would, which I recommend be just for truck traffic only, to separate out. Part of that recommendation would be is to install some inferior curb lines to avoid any kind of traffic or the lives there. Then the third drive would be another 24 foot wide driveway, which would not be trucks, but just for the regular vehicle naturally.
Thank you.
And where would they all be located? They're all located split up there.
Any, I remember this in earlier testimony that we had, we had asked this now, is this a certain third driveway? And then as you stated, is his recommendation is supportive? Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. In theory, I understand why we want to separate passenger vehicles from trucks. However, in the daily operation on our roadways, they find themselves mixed on a daily basis. Why is it necessary to create a special driveway for this passenger vehicles versus the trucks when they currently operate on all of our streets each and every day together?
Sure, so the reason why, there's two portions of this recommendation is, if we used to break out these trucks, I'd recommend we put in a raised, our social direct left turns, west turn, along Schoolhouse Road toward West End Town, which if these were stayed are mixed, we'd have a weight restriction on the regular vehicle turn, restricted on the long and long end, that's the way to kind of separate those, so you can get some truck traffic away from Canal Walk on the other side.
Okay.
I, I, I just have a question. Karen, there was one discussion earlier that the third driveway required a zoning value, but I think that the third driveway requires a zoning value based on...
Yes, it would, and that's why I've had this recommendation, because by initial report, the applicant is not, is not, is a located vendor, right?
My thought on this is that in resolution, especially upon that, that this variance would ensure it's by the planning board, you know, whether they have to... To make it clear, but this is how it comes down, this way it comes to...
For the record, while we may not have an objection to the third driveway, we cannot agree to it because of the grade and the variance, so the board can do what it wishes with respect to that third driveway, but we did not propose it in our plans because at the board record likes, at the first hearing, we had two variances that we were seeking and we were know that we better revise our plan because this board doesn't want to entertain any variances, and therefore we revise our plans. So again, the board can do what they want, and if the board wants to go along with Mr. Mazzi's recommendation, that's up to the board.
And just so the board knows, it certainly would be unprecedented where we believe that for, you know, better, a better zoning alternative or a better benefit, better planning alternative that the board has granted or has suggested variances within an application to, to do this, what we've done before for setbacks, for sidewalks, for things that we think could be a better planning alternative. So the board is certainly going to impose that and at the same time, grant the variance even though they have this ask for it.
Good evening, civil neighborman. I have, speaking, I have a question, three, two questions actually. Number one, we go in third driveway, what does it do in terms of the purpose, coverage and the stormwater requirement?
So in terms of the purpose coverage, there would be some opportunity for the brand to gain areas of purpose coverage. I've done a full analysis, prepare with me for one second. The site's at 54% purpose coverage proposed, where 60 allow, and this would be pretty limited, this would cause a variance in the application, but it would not, it would not cause a variance in purpose. But in terms of stormwater requirement that have been analyzed by the act of, there might need to be some slight modifications that is just to counter any of this stuff.
And have you done the math to show it doesn't cause a, they variance in terms of purpose, or how positive are you?
I'm positive because 10% would be roughly two acres of area that would increase or against four constructed lanes.
Okay. And in terms of the DRCC application, do you have an understanding as to whether or not it would have to be a resubmission?
That potentially could happen, I can't speak in the agency, but there is a chance of being like... Thank you on any other questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So just to be clear, one more time, I had a question. The recommendation is strictly to prevent trucks from turning left?
It's a combination of, you're sure trucks from turning left and to separate having car and truck traffic.
Have you taken into consideration aesthetically how imposing that would be along the Sina Corridor? Have you taken into consideration the impact on the pedestrian, in fact, safety by introducing another driveway?
So there was, the conflict would still remain the same because the traffic would change, there would be an extra conflict point, which I would prevent, but overall, the actual flow, we have to...
Yeah, but signage, in theory, could prevent people from turning left, we just have no left turn, right? And that would probably...
In experience in township, no, we've had issues with traffic control, that's a gamble, there's a risk, because honestly, if I see here come a 527, they're going to know which is, which is, we're listening to that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you consider, or was it the option to consider of, we'll say, not having a third driveway, but just constructing the driveway the way you're proposing for the trucks so that no one, cars or trucks, can make a left turn?
So it hasn't been considered, I mean, I can just put a restriction on regular road, all this other stuff, it wouldn't be able to go left. The only concern I've had is if we went that route, it could be driveway, I haven't ever been able to do that, because without the truck turning left, it's pretty simple in terms of the damage you'd be, or your vehicle, you'd have to get a little more narrow, so make sure the car didn't start going down, so we don't want to create any shade there where, where it might cause an issue.
Okay.
Okay, so logistically here, we're almost at a quarter to, so let's take a 10 minute break, we'll come back, we'll hold the channel off, and then see how it goes.